All rise. The honor of Chief Justice and Associate Justices of the Supreme Court of North Carolina. Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes. The Supreme Court of North Carolina has consented to the dispatch of business. God save the state and the honorable court.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Our next case is Hanson et al. versus Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education. We will hear from the appellant.
May I please the court, your honors? My name is Terry Wallace. I'm with the Mecklenburg County Bar. I represent the defendant, appellant, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools or Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education. The issue in this case is whether Section 143-166.50 requires a school board to make a 5% contribution to its campus police officer's 401K plan. Trial court in this matter looked at the statute, analyzed the statute, reviewed the legislative history, and said no. The Court of Appeals did not review the entire statute, didn't analyze the entire statute, and did not look at the legislative history and included, yes, we are responsible for paying it. We're here today to ask this court to reverse the Court of Appeals. There are no issues of fact and dispute here, but I do want to highlight a couple of facts that are going to be pertinent for our discussions today. The issue in this case involves two different retirement systems. On the one hand, you have the local government employees retirement system, which is called Ledgers. And on the other hand, we have the teachers and state employees retirement system called Teasers. The plaintiffs and CMS are members of Teasers. They are not members of Ledgers. And that's going to be important for our discussion today because it's our position that the statute that we're talking about is a Ledgers statute. Now, this court knows the rules on statutory construction. There's over 100 years of jurisprudence on this issue. And there's guidance on how we're not supposed to cherry pick words out of a statute, read those words and phrases in isolation, and take things out of context. If you take a look at the statute in this particular case, Section 143-166.50 is what I call a dotted wool ledger statute. Ledgers is woven into the fabric of the entire statute. I briefed this issue. I went through every subsection of the statute, pointing that out. So I'm not going to rehash that today. But I do want to point out one subsection E., which is the subsection that we're talking about today. And if you look at that, the last paragraph of that particular statute talks about an officer or an employee taking their 401K earnings and adding it to Ledgers and calculating a special retirement allowance, things of that nature. So these are Ledgers provisions. And it wouldn't make sense to have a Teasers employee transferring their 401K earnings to Ledgers to calculate a Ledger's special retirement balance.
Is Ledgers limited to county and municipal employees?
Yes.
If that's the case, then why in the definition of employer in 143-166.50 does it say county, city, town, or other political subdivision? If, as you argue, this statute only applies to law enforcement officers in Ledgers?
Correct. So you're getting to the other political subdivisions clause?
In other words, that language, it seems, if Ledgers is limited to counties and municipalities, then that would seem to be surplusage.
Well, I think a village, for example, could be another.
That's just another name for municipality in our law.
Correct. If, so, are you asking whether they should have not have added that language?
Well, I'm asking you, why is it there?
Why did legislature put that in there?
Yes. Because we're not supposed to treat it as surplusage, right? So what does it, why is it there? That's my question.
The way I look at it is signaling other like municipalities. So it's, otherwise, if they wanted to include every political subdivisions of the state, they would not have included cities and towns to describe the general. So the general language at the end of the statute is formed by the specific references to those municipalities.
But do you see the point I'm getting at? It's, maybe I haven't put it clearly, but you've told us that Ledgers is limited to county and municipal employees. And so if that's the case, it would seem that we wouldn't expect to see this other political subdivision language. We would expect it just to define employers as county employees and municipal employees.
That's a valid consideration. I think in interpreting the statute, you go back and look at the legislative history. And when the General Assembly amended the statute in 1997 to define law enforcement officers, which includes the definition of employer, it said that this act is to define law enforcement officers for the purposes of Ledger's eligibility. At the end of that amendment, it also says, "This amendment applies to those employees enrolled in Ledgers after July 1st of 1997." So the history, the legislative history is there in terms of the legislature saying this is a Ledger's statute.
So I have that statutory question, but I also have sort of a broader policy question is, which is, why would the legislature want to distinguish or exclude members of CMS campus police?
I think as a matter of, did they want to include them? And I think if they wanted to include them, they would have specifically written to the statute. And I point to, there are other definitions of employer that are within the general statutes. If you go to, I think it's Section 135-111 has a definition of employer that's different. It applies to Teasers, but it also specifically lists county and city boards of education. The reason I raise that is because the legislature, they know when they want to include a school board and when they don't want to include a school board. And they've done it in other pieces where school boards are included in a definition of employer. I don't think there was any intent here to include school boards when this bill was passed back in the 80s.
So you're getting to another question I have, sorry. But so this, the local act that allowed CMS to have a police, campus police force, that was enacted in, was it 2006?
2009.
2009, okay. Had there, to the best of your knowledge, had there been any similar local acts for any other school systems prior to that?
I'm not aware. It's my understanding that we may have been the first, but I, don't quote me on that. But my research hasn't revealed anything, and I haven't, I haven't heard of any. Mr. Gresham may have different thoughts on that, but.
So is part of your argument that, well, whatever political subdivision of the state means in 143-166.50, the legislature didn't have school districts in mind because there were no campus police forces?
Correct. And I'll go a step further. Since that local act was passed in 2009, the General Assembly amended Section 143-166.50 at least three times. And so they've had multiple opportunities to say, hey, we want to include school boards. Let's do that. And they've never, that's never happened. So that signifies that their original intent was to exclude school boards, and they've never changed their thought process.
There are other.
Well, my question is just, isn't the opposite true as well? That if we understand the language that says other subdivisions of the state to have some significance, and then the legislature passes, subsequently passes legislation that gives a school board, which is another, and assume for a minute that a school board is a political subdivision of the state. They pass, subsequently pass a law saying, oh, by the way, we're going to give this school board law enforcement officers, when they then also have the power to say, but in this other statute, we didn't mean school boards apply here.
I think if we laser focus on the definition of employer, includes that definition, you get to look at the rest of the statute as well. And the rest of the statute points to law enforcement officers who are city and county employees. And you can go further back and look at when subsection E. was amended to add the 5% contribution requirement in 1985. That was funded by city and county sales taxes. And so the way they look at it is like, we've got, here's extra money. We're going to create, we're going to require you to pay your city and county officers a 5% contribution. And also, we're going to take that same money and allow for your local officers to have a special separation allowance, which is another retirement statute, which Court of Appeals agreed with us that that was a Ledger statute. But the point being, when they authorized that funding for both of the statutes at the same time, they had Ledgers in mind. So those are, they're interlocked.
But it still seems to me that if later on, when they said, we are also going to have law enforcement officers employed by a school board, that if they didn't want those provisions to apply to those law enforcement officers, they could have specifically made that, amended the law to be clear about that.
To say that they're not included?
Right.
I don't see, so I would say they're not going to say it's not included because in their mind, they were never included in the first place. So why amend the statute to say they're not included when their intent was never to include them initially?
It seems to me that one of your strongest arguments, and it's, and I'll ask your opposing counsel about this as well, is that the legislature certainly knows that school district employees are in Teasers, not Ledgers. And so it would understand that if it wanted this to apply to them, that it would need to include language to that effect. It makes that clear.
That is absolutely correct.
I mean, we do have to assume, don't we, that the legislature knows school system employees are in Teasers and local government or city and county employees are in Ledgers?
They certainly do understand that distinction. They understand what a school board is, a local education agency. There's Chapter 115(c), there's Teasers. They know what a school board is and is not. And if they wanted to include them, in the stroke of a pen, the legislature could have said, we're going to include these officers within this Ledger statute.
And so there are sworn law enforcement officers in other school districts now, aren't there?
Yes. I believe Moore County has.
They're covered by Ledgers.
Those officers? I don't believe so.
Okay. So I mean, I guess the point I'm getting at is if the, if we look at the language that says, that talks about political subdivisions. And we've certainly said in some of our case law, talking about schools, that schools are subdivisions of the state. That, I mean, you've made a lot of good arguments about why it just wouldn't work to try to cram them into Ledgers if the General Assembly had not planned ahead and structured it so that you were always in that system. And then I say, well, maybe then it creates an ambiguity. And I guess my question is, wouldn't it be possible then if we said, well, we have to resolve that ambiguity? And we can't come up with a reason why the General Assembly would not want these officers to get the benefits that every other law enforcement officer, sort of, you can recognize that as sort of because of service to the state, you know, the risks they're taking in their jobs and so on, to have these benefits? That we would say, well, that was the intent. And then you just need to work with the state treasurer and others to figure out how it would work. I mean, what, if we think it's ambiguous, why wouldn't we do that? Try to look at what the spirit of the law likely was?
I think the legislature, so they, they addressed part of this issue with state, state law enforcement officers under a separate statute. It's 143-166.30. And it has its own definitional section. And local law enforcement offices are over here. So I agree with you. School boards are kind of in the middle. Certainly doesn't fit .50. They didn't raise the issue about whether it applies to .30, which is a completely different statute. And I'm not here today to say it will apply to 143-166.30, but there is a mechanism for state law enforcement officers to get this benefit. And that goes back to my original point. If, for whatever reason, if the legislature believes that campus police officers should have a benefit like that, then they will come up, they will put it in the statute, and they'll come up with that funding mechanism, how it's going to get paid for. Because as it stands right now, when they enacted .50 back in 1985, or the 5% piece, there was a funding mechanism that came along with it. And the plaintiffs are asking that, well, we should pay them just like the city does, but we're not getting, we weren't funded that way. That's how the cities and counties were funded. So that's a legislative fix, not a judicial fix.
But, and I'm sorry to keep coming back to the political subdivision language, but I mean, it seems to me that's the heart of the plaintiff's case.
It is.
But so we have to, we're supposed to assume that the legislature knows the law. We assume that. So don't we have to assume they know that our decisions say that school districts are political subdivisions of the state? And that if, therefore, if they didn't want them to be included, that they would have either not included this language or they would have expressly excluded school districts?
When the act was originally passed, if there were no school districts, and I don't think they're, in my head, they're not thinking about school districts having their own campus police officers.
So that's where you'd point us back to the legislative history?
Exactly. And then with the amendment, when they say, this only applies to those law enforcement officers enrolled in Ledgers, that is sending clear message that we, you have to be a Ledger's member. I mean, that's.
So just to make sure I've got your argument, you're saying we wouldn't expect to see a carve out in the employer definition for school districts because there were no school districts, as far as we know?
As far as we know.
That had the authority to maintain sworn law enforcement.
Right. At that, at that point when the statute was originally enacted.
Did I hear you say that there is a way for folks who are under the state retirement system to also, law enforcement officers, to get a law enforcement 5%?
There's a comparable, and this wasn't, this wasn't raised at the trial court below. So they didn't file suit on this other statute. It's 143-166.30. And it talks about states, institutions, agencies, similar language in terms of the 5% contribution, has a different definition of employer. So in all candor to the court, I mean, that is, that is there. It wasn't the point of the complaint that was filed here, but there is a comparable statutory scheme for state officers.
But then we would have to be saying that Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools is a state agency?
If it meets the definition. And that's, and that's an argument that Mr. Gresham, if he wants to make that, he would have. And I don't think it does, but.
Right. But I thought we were pretty clear that our case law said that it is a political subdivision, not a state agency.
They're, so you're right. And I, I'm not going to quibble with those cases because they all have some sort of reference to a school board being a political subdivision of the state. I think I have seen a case or two where a school board is referred to as a local agency. I've seen that language too, but not to get hung up on that verbiage. I still think you go back to the legislative history here. You've got Teasers, you have Ledgers. They're not Ledger's employees. And the legislature has made it clear that law enforcement officer, the definition as in 1997, only applies to those officers enrolled in Ledgers. These officers are not enrolled in Ledgers. CMS is not a Ledger's employer.
But I guess, to the point about the adding in, I guess, whoever be, highway patrol and others, that the idea is, can't we take from that a legislative intent that all sworn law enforcement officers should get these special benefits because of the service they're providing to the state? And then if we think there's an ambiguity here, we should consider that in trying to figure out what the legislature likely wants when it would piece all these statutes together?
So I would, I would be interjecting things that aren't in the record, but just for discussion purposes. So your state officers and your police department shares, they have general jurisdiction, if you, for lack of a better word. So they're out detecting crimes. They're not limited to here's schools, school issues, things that arise out of a very narrow jurisdictional area. And so, yes, they're sworn officers, but they're limited in terms of scope. And so that, I would make a distinction there for what it's worth.
So if we were to affirm the Court of Appeals, how would CMS comply?
That's a great question. And that's something we're kind of scratching our heads because we haven't figured that out yet. We have to come up with the money from someplace, and they'll have to figure out a way to fund it. Because again, when the legislature said they rolled the statute out, county and city sales taxes funded it. I think it was $350 million a year or something that was available for cities and counties to fund that 5% contribution. And that doesn't flow to our employees for salaries.
But you go to the county commissioners every year with a budget. And ultimately, if you have a disagreement with the budget, you take it to the courts. So, I mean, you don't fund any of your operations by levying taxes. You fund it by going to your county commissioners.
I agree with that. And you raise a valid point. And our major issue is that we've got these canons of statutory construction. You've got the plain language of the statute. And everyone has made great points. I think there are points for the General Assembly. If they want to take a pen and change the statute and provide a funding mechanism for it, just like they did when they enacted the statute originally, I think that's the appropriate thing. I think the plaintiffs were asking this court to step into the shoes of the General Assembly.
But if you go to the plain language, employer, other political subdivision of the state, sounds like school districts to me. Why is not a, just plain language analysis, why doesn't that get us to where the plaintiffs are asking us to be?
If you hyper-focus on that one piece of the statute will help you get to where the plaintiffs want you to go, but you've got to look at the, you can't read that one sentence in isolation. You have to look at the entire statutory scheme, the entire statute. And that statute has Ledgers woven throughout it. There's no reference to Teasers. It talks about taking your earnings and getting a special separation allowance or retirement allowance under Ledgers, which doesn't make sense if you're not a Ledger's employee. And so this whole statute is Ledgers through and through. Every single section of the statute talks about Ledgers. The legislative history talks about Ledgers. When they amended law enforcement officers, that applies to Ledgers. These officers are not Ledgers, and CMS is not a Ledger's participant. And I may be oversimplifying it, but that is, the plaintiffs are asking this court to rewrite the law.
So you've got a 401K, and the request is the 5%, I guess that's matching, or at least it would be a 5% contribution that would be made. I thought 401Ks could be administered, you know, they belong to the individual. The individual can withdraw it according to that individual's desires. How does this even implicate, in other words, why couldn't you have the state retirement system in this 401K and those two work together to benefit the law enforcement officer?
I think the logistical workings of the transferring of the earnings from Ledgers to Teasers requires some sort of legislative action, in my opinion.
Why do you have to transfer anything as opposed to just, you've got a 401K that's owned by the individual as opposed to, I guess, some other retirement mechanism? But this is a 401K.
Right. But the statute says you would take those earnings and transfer them to Ledgers to help calculate a special retirement allowance, which, if you change that to say Teasers, then it makes it more workable. And it signifies that the legislature has some intent to include school boards in this legislation, but it just says transfer it to Ledgers and calculate a retirement benefit based on Ledgers. And you've never been a Ledger's employee before, which, so that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sympathetic to that, and I understand, I mean, it's your job to give your client certainty about what the law is, and we're in sort of uncharted territory here. But I guess as a practical matter, wouldn't, what would happen is that you would take the court judgment, if we were to affirm that judgment, to the state treasurer and say, the court has ordered us to make this work. So I know there's no statutory authorization to move money around this way, but you have to do it. The court has ordered it to be done.
I understand. And I think to get there, with all due respect, you would have to disregard some canons of statutory construction to kind of get to that result.
Well, but it does, it seems to me the statute says, first of all, that the 5% is credited to the designated individual accounts of the participating local officers. And then it says they may elect to transfer. It doesn't say it has to be transferred or that it can't go anywhere else.
Correct. So I'm referring to, I think, two paragraphs down from where you are. It says upon retirement.
Right. But that language is where I'm, may elect. They can if they want.
They can, right.
But they don't have to. And so if they're not in that plan, they just have their 401K.
I think the fact that the language is in there, just sends the message that this is not, this is a Ledger's statute. So whether they can elect to do it or whether required to do it, it's, Ledgers is woven into the fabric of the statute. required to do it, it's, it's, ledger is woven into the fabric of the statute, and to do something otherwise would be judicial rewriting of the statute. I've got four minutes left, if there are no more questions, I'll reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. We'll hear from the appellate.
Mr. Chief Justice and members of the court, I am John Gresham with the law firm of Tin Fulton in Charlotte. Something that I need to clear up right away, these payments, 5%, go into what is called the supplemental retirement income plan. It's referred to in some places as 401K, but the plan, which is actually set out in the TASER statute at 13590 forward, is, and this was one of the 12, in the, in the Superior Court, we had 12 agreed findings, because this was on a declaratory judgment method or ruling. It is not, the law enforcement officers and everyone else in TASERS can be in the supplemental income retirement plan. However, only law enforcement officers get the 5%. And, interesting enough, the supplemental retirement income plan is in the TASERS statute, 135. 135 also says law enforcement officers, it's talking about all law enforcement officers are, as defined in chapter 166. Law enforcement officers for this supplemental retirement income plan, in 13592, says that all officers as defined in 16650. And that includes plaintiffs and members of the other school districts that have since, as your honor indicated, are now in the plan.
So what, what's your response to your friend's argument that just a sentence or two above that discussion of transferring the 5%, it says, in addition to the funds that'll be contributed from elders, which wouldn't be possible here because there was, there's, these few aren't in elders, what, what's your response?
The additional amount, if you will look there, if the particular town, city gets some of the funds from court costs, it says that those should also be put in, so those are the additional funds. In other words, you get the 5%, but also if your jurisdiction gets some of the court costs, which as you know are distributed widely to a number of agencies in the state. So they, they talk about a 401K plan, but the plan is under the supplemental retirement income plan, which has its own board, which is members of the state retirement system and others. It is totally separate from ledgers and TASERS. It is administered by this own board, and that's set out in chapter 135 also. Interestingly enough, they put the supplemental retirement income plan in the TASER statute, not the ledger statute, and put the definition of law enforcement officers, in 13592, references specifically to 166.50, and that would include these law enforcement officers too, and if you look at the definition, they fit that. But let's get back to the question that CMS tried to figure out how to deal with in their brief, which is the language, other political subdivisions. In their brief, they say, well, that's just dicta, in these cases that say the school system are political subdivisions. I would note that the Chief Justice, in a case, City of Asheville v. State, in his dissent with the then Chief Justice Martin, says specifically that school systems, towns, counties, and, and school systems are all political subdivisions. And the important thing is, the school system, other than the state, some other institutions like the universities of North Carolina, where ultimately the funds come down, but they are run separately, all are receiving this benefit. So right now, we have the only law enforcement officers in this state that aren't are the Charlotte Mecklenburg police officers.
I didn't hear your friend to say that, that was sort of dicta or surplusage. What I understood is, I understood his argument to say, you have county, city, town, or other political subdivision, and what the General Assembly was really trying to do there was recognize, there's a lot of other words that, you know, we've got a long complicated history of municipal government law, we don't want to risk the chance that somebody shows up and says, well, we're not a county, city, town, we're a village, or we're an old school township, or whatever it is, so what they meant by those words were, or whatever other type of local government entity or municipality you say you are, that's what we're trying to cover, but we're not covering schools or other things that technically are subdivisions or arms of the state, but aren't part of what we would consider the, the local government. What's?
But they're also, if you look at them, they are a local government. Each county has its own school system.
But, but they're not, they're not general purpose governments, and, and so why doesn't a Euston Generous tell us that, along the lines of what Justice Dietz just suggested, that we're really talking about counties, cities, or something equivalent to them?
I think the language, as someone said when counsel was arguing, villages and all are just other municipalities, and the cases, including the Rowan County versus Gibson case, says that school systems are political subdivisions, and the reason I said what counsel said, if you read their brief, that's on page nine.
You, you would agree, wouldn't you, though, that, that this statute does contain a number of references to ledgers? And certainly the General Assembly is aware that school system employees are in teasers, not ledgers, so i- if it meant what you think it meant, why wouldn't we see some reference to teasers in there?
Because this statute was passed at a time before schools, districts began to employ sworn law enforcement.
But doesn't that hurt you, though? Because doesn't that bolster the CMS argument that whatever political subdivision meant in 1986, when this definition was enacted, it, it wasn't understood to mean school districts because they didn't maintain sworn law enforcement officers?
But the legislature left room for that to occur. You don't, that school systems may at one point, as they did, employ sworn law enforcement officers by statute.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is, it, it totally makes sense to, that you would only see the references to ledgers in here, because when this was enacted, there were no school districts that had sworn law enforcement officers, so then why wouldn't we say, well, we need to see some kind of language added to the statute that demonstrates to us that the legislature wants or intends for the CMS officers, or Moore County schools' officers to be included?
Well, there are more, I think, as Justice Dietz indicated, there are a number of school systems that now have officers. We do not have in the record whether or not they are receiving this benefit, because that was not part of the 12 agreed upon.
But see, I'm not sure that that, I, I don't, I don't know if that helps you or hurts you, because one response to that is, well, that's, let's say that's true, and yet the legislature has not come back and amended the statute.
Right, but TASERS apparently thinks that they are covered because, and I need to apologize to the court, my wife was having some very serious health problems, and I was trying to get a brief to you in time for the school system to file their reply brief, but we put in a, under rule 28G, under the TASERS, North Carolina Retirement System, puts out a, nearly a statement about the benefits for North Carolina, for school, for TASERS employees, and if you will look at that memorandum, all law enforcement officers, and this is speaking of TASERS, you are automatically a member of the 401K plan, your employee pays an amount equal to 5%. That's TASERS' own statement, so apparently TASERS sees this to be covered, covering all of its law enforcement officers, which includes those for school boards.
Just on this question of whether the General Assembly needed to amend the statute to specifically refer to TASERS, if the statute defines employer to include other political subdivision, and it defines officer just as a law enforcement officer, i- i- if by its definition, the statute covers law enforcement officers employed by other political subdivisions, why would they need to further amend it to say, and of course, we mean school boards?
I don't think they do, and the most important thing is, when you look back over to 13590 forward, where it says, what is the definition of law enforcement officers? It is 13592.6. It says, as defined in 166.50. All law enforcement officers as defined in 166.50. It didn't say just the law enforcement officers who are in ledgers, it says all law enforcement officers. Interesting enough, the supplemental retirement income plan is set out in the TASERS statute, which is 135. So, and to the question of what the legislature meant, or the cases, if you look back at the school systems brief, it says, it's really unclear whether school systems are political subdivisions. If you'll take a look at the case that we cited in a memo under rule 28, the case is Williams versus the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education. The case dealt with the Emergency Management Act, which said that political subdivisions are not liable for accidents, or what happens if you're carrying out an Emergency Management And the court said, under the Emergency Management Act, neither the state nor any of its political subdivisions shall be liable for death or injury. So, while...
So, so are you making the broader point that, say, for example, for statutory immunity purposes, or for governmental immunity purposes, the school system wants to say, oh, yes, absolutely, we're, we're a political subdivision? No question about it, but, but here they're saying, no, 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 we're really not.
Right, and the Williams case cites a case that this court did essentially the same thing, strangely enough, for when school buses are driven by athletic personnel taking teams to a game, they're not liable either, and that's because they are a political subdivision. That case was decided, and I would say that Williams case was decided two weeks after the Court of Appeals decided this case, so...
The, the handout that you referenced, the North Carolina Retirement Systems, that says additional benefits for law enforcement officers under TASER plan, do you know what statute that's based on?
I do not, I have spoken with the attorneys there, and I have not gotten a clear answer, but that's their position, and it's, by the way, the board that governs the supplemental retirement income plan is neither TASERS nor ledgers, it is a separate board.
So your position would be that even though these law enforcement officers are under TASERS, that in addition to that, they're, they are eligible for the law enforcement supplemental benefit?
Yes, and I won't go through then the decisions that make clear that the school system is a political subdivision. There is the Rowan County case versus U.S. Gibson, where they said, school system is a political subdivision, and therefore the statute of limitations and the statute of reposed does not bar them from suing U.S. Gibson for the work they did on their schools. So, there's no doubt that the school system is a political subdivision. So there's no doubt that the school system is a political subdivision. The statute, 166.50, specifically says employer means county, city, town, or other political subdivision. And by saying city and town, I think it covers all municipalities, as I believe Justice Burger or Justice Dietz pointed out when Mr. Wallace was arguing. With the fact that, one last point, counsel said, "Well, they only do schools." It's not true, because if you look at their statute, they can do, work with other members there. The statute's setting up Charlotte Mecklenburg allowing this.
You're saying that these campus police officers have the statutory authority to cooperate with other law enforcement officers?
Off-campus. And when you talk about just being on campus, I want you to think about what is happening in our schools. School shootings, school knifings, school riots. Their job as law enforcement officers carries the same dangers. And it's our position that to have these police officers getting this benefit, it is essentially a way of recognizing that they are subject to the same issues as all law enforcement officers. And it's hard to see why they would not be equally entitled to the 5%. This may not be totally a remedial statute with 5%, but it certainly comes close when you think that all the people that are covered as law enforcement officers are facing the same dangers. And while schools may not have been that way 30 years ago, they sure as devil are that way today. All you need to do is to read your paper of choice, either online or the few that are still in print, that tell us what the dangers that they are on school campuses and that these officers are covered. Those, they are covering these issues. So we believe that the way 166.50 is written as other political subdivisions, which one is the only one that has police officers other than the state and the ones in Leger's? These are those officers. And when, if this case goes back to the Supreme, to the Superior Court, we will be looking at the facts as they have changed since this case started five years ago. So we ask the court to uphold the decision of the unanimous decision of the Court of Appeals and find, allow this matter to go back to the Superior Court for a determination of what period these benefits are due. Thank you, your honors.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Rebuttal.
Thank you. I'll be brief, and I just want to touch on a few points that Mr. Gresham brought up. He mentioned the statute 135-92 or 94. There's no issue here that these officers, like most state employees, can participate in the Supplemental Retirement Income Plan. That is a benefit that is available to most of government in North Carolina. The issue is the 5% contribution. So I just wanted to make that clear, given his reference to that particular statute. As we talked about before, the local act establishing the CMS police force was passed in 2009. Three years later, the General Assembly amended Section 143-166.50 to add a forfeiture requirement. And that forfeiture requirement is Section 128-38.4A. And that is a Leger's statute. It basically says if you commit a crime, you forfeit your benefits. So again, the legislature, knowing how the statute's written, again, imported a Leger's reference after the local act had established the school board. So they knew that the statute, CMS had police officers, they weren't included, and they added another Leger's provision after the passing of the statute. Mr. Gresham mentions a handout that he filed with the court that dealt with state benefits. I just want to point out that that was out before the trial court. This is the first time we've seen that. I've seen a version of that document before, as I pointed out in my brief, and as my understanding that that handout refers to Section 143-166.30, which is a different statute that we talked about before. I understand the definition of employer, and it includes political subdivision of the state, but you can't just look at that definition in a vacuum and isolation. You can't ignore the rest of the statute that, over and over and over, is importing Leger's provisions, not including school employees. Mr. Gresham has advanced a number of policy reasons why these officers should get those benefits. I can't disagree with the policy rationale, but that is, policy is up to the General Assembly. If they want to include these officers in this legislation, they can do it with a stroke of a pen. And to ask this court to essentially rewrite the statute and throw out the rules of statutory construction, we would ask that the court apply the canons of statutory construction, look at the statute as a whole, don't look at the statute provisions in a vacuum, and look at it holistically. And we would ask that the court reverse the Court of Appeals decision and hold that CMS is not responsible for the 5% contribution. I've got a minute left. If your honors have any additional questions, I'll sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Ms. Clark.